There's gonna be a couple of teams that are gonna have to... How do they look in the... They got people out? They have a football scrimmage that they've got this year against Central Valley. So, they're terrible.
I think their expectations are so... Gets... They get everybody else's best.
Right. You got Sierra, you got Big Bear. Oh, and Anthony got Tika. Right, they don't play Cardinal no more, do they?
Ready?
Ready.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started with the City Council meeting of Monday, July 28, 2014. Can we have the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Dorossette.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
Mayor Viera.
Here.
Next, we will have the invocation by Mr. Britton, if you would do us the honor, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our eternal Father in Heaven, we're so thankful, Father, for the many blessings we enjoy. We're thankful for our freedoms here and the opportunity we have to govern ourselves. Father, we ask for Thy Spirit to be with the members of the City Council, that they might continue to guide the efforts of the City of Series and all that happens. We ask You to bless those that serve here, that would be guided and protected in all their activities. We ask You to bless the leaders of the world, that they might strive for peace, and that our service, men and women, may be able to return home to us soon in safety. We dedicate ourselves to Thee, and we say this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. We have a couple of special presentations this evening, but before we do that, I would like to call up the folks that have the Adopt a Pet. Don't want to have to keep them around. So, the Stanislaus Animal Services Agency has many dogs and cats available for adoption. All of the animals available for adoption are available for adoption at the shelter, and they are spayed and neutered. They have age-appropriate vaccinations and have a microchip. Is this Marco that we have? This is Marco that we have, and Gordas was featured last month and was rescued on July 15th. Marco is an adorable black-and-white, is it wire-haired Doxy mix? Yep. He is approximately two months old and is neutered and microchipped. He is patiently awaiting for you to take him home. His ID number is A402011. And if anybody wants any of that information, let us know, we have that here. He's available for adoption at the Stanislaus Animal Service Agency. Please remember that adding a new member to your family is a big commitment, and that the shelter staff is there to help you to meet your new best friend. To adopt any pets, please visit the shelter at 3647 Cornucopia Way in Modesto, or you can view the adoptable animals at www.stancounty.com/animalservices. So, again... All right, thank you. Okay, next we will move to the presentation to Kim Johnson, Kathy Foster, and Lisa Montero-More for your years of service on the Measure H Oversight Committee. I do have some... Presentation of some plaques here. Before I do that, I did want to read something here. Tonight, we would like to recognize Kathy Foster, Kim Johnson, and Lisa Montero-More for their service on the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee. These three women have been actively involved in the Measure H since its inception in 2007. They were very instrumental in the passage of Measure H, reaching out to the community member, service clubs, and campaigning long hours to ensure that the half-cent public safety sales tax was approved. The sales tax measure would have had difficulty passing without their efforts. Immediately after the passage of Measure H, Kathy, Kim, and Lisa applied to be on the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee. The committee was formed in 2008 and is responsible for overseeing the expenditures made under the half-cent public safety sales tax. Kim served on the committee from 2008 to November of 2013, when she moved outside of the city limits. Kathy and Lisa both served from 2008 to 2014. We would like to thank you for your service and for recognizing the importance of Measure H to our police, fire, and 9/11 emergency responses. Okay, next we will go to the awards presentation by Acting Police Chief Brent Smith regarding actions on April 12, 2012.
Yes, we have been trying to make up for this for some time. Good evening, Council. Tonight, we're recognizing four officers that we have been waiting for some time to honor. They're being recognized for their efforts in an event that occurred on April 12, 2012. On that date, Deputy Sheriff Robert Paris was shot and killed while he and another deputy were serving an eviction notice at an apartment complex on Chrysler Drive in Modesto. The deputies were attempting entry, with the help of a local locksmith, Glendon In... Excuse me, Inghart, when the suspect opened fire with a rifle from inside the residence, fatally wounding both Deputy Paris and Mr. Inghart as he was working on the front door lock. The suspect then barricaded himself inside the residence for several hours before committing suicide after the apartment complex caught fire. Series Officers Jason Coley, Keith Kitcher, Darren Vin, and Joe Wren, guys can come up right here, were some of the initial units arriving on scene, along with law enforcement from other departments. They quickly formed a hasty team of officers to make rescue of both Paris and Inghart, not knowing their condition. In an effort to save their lives, Officer Kitcher began evacuating people from the immediate area that were in harm's way of the armed, barricaded suspect. It was later determined that the suspect was armed with 22 firearms, a gas mask, and other tactical equipment. While barricaded in the building, he cut through walls and adjoining apartments in order to gain a tactical advantage. The Series SWAT team assisted in this incident as well, until it ended in the early morning hours. There's something to be said about people who willingly place themselves in danger by running towards gunfire to protect others. Tonight, we commend Officers Coley, Kitcher, Vin, and Wren for their actions. At this time, I'd like to call Mayor Viera to join me in decorating these four officers while the City Clerk reads a citation.
For service as set forth in the following citation. For conspicuous gallantry and intrepidity at the risk of his life and beyond the call of duty while serving as a police officer, City of Series Police Department, on April 12, 2012. Series Police Officers Joseph Wren, Jason Coley, Keith Kitcher, and Detective Darren Vin responded to an officer-down radio call at 2141 Chrysler Avenue in the City of Modesto, Stanislaus County. When they arrived, Officer Wren and Detective Vin ran towards the location where they saw an officer and civilian down in front of the suspect's residence. These officers took positions of cover on the east side of the residence near Officer Jason Coley. Within seconds of arriving, they and other officers formed two rescue teams. As the teams moved in for the rescue, Officer Coley and Detective Vin left the safety of cover, stood their ground, and were prepared to defend their fellow law enforcement officers and residents who were still being evacuated from the area. Officer Wren and a sheriff's deputy entered the field of fire in an attempt to rescue the civilian without cover and lightly armed. In doing so, Officer Wren, Coley, and Detective Vin left the safety of cover and were exposed to potential gunfire in order to save a life. Within just feet of the suspect's residence, Officer Wren ignored the imminent danger and grabbed the civilian. With the assistance of the deputy, the civilian was moved to cover where they could render medical aid to the victim. When Officer Kitcher arrived to the incident, he noticed three elderly females dangerously close to the incident location, so he immediately took action to evacuate them safely. He ran upstairs towards the scared women who were yelling for help. He grabbed one woman by the arm and assisted another, who was only able to walk with the assistance of a walker. Officer Kitcher was able to usher the three elderly women to a safe location away from the imminent danger. Officer Kitcher then returned and took a position of cover until relieved. Tragically, both the officer and civilian succumbed to their injuries. It was later discovered that the suspect was armed with 22 firearms, a gas mask, ballistic armor, and other tactical equipment. Officers Wren, Coley, and Detective Vin are hereby commended for their heroic actions, courage, and for risking their own safety in an effort to save a human life, the most generous and courageous sacrifice one can make. Their selfless and valiant actions embody the highest traditions of the Series Police Department. For their actions, the Medal of Valor is rightfully awarded to Police Officer Joseph Wren, Detective Darren Vin, Police Officer Jason Coley. Officer Keith Kitcher is hereby commended for risking his own safety in an effort to save a human life. His selfless and valiant actions embody the highest traditions of the Series Police Department. For his actions, the citation for meritorious service is rightfully awarded to Police Officer Keith Kitcher. Signed, Brent Smith, Acting Chief of Police, Series Police Department.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next, we will move to the approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting of June 23, 2014. Both the Vice Mayor and myself were excused, so I will turn this over to Councilmember Lane to handle the approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Okay, wait, first, have a second.
Second.
First and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, 3-0 with two extensions.
Okay. Next, we'll have the approval of the minutes of the special City Council meeting of June 30, 2014. All members were present.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Citizens, communications to the council on matters not included on the agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, I have one speaker card. Carol Blomquist is going to give us an update on the library progress.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. We've had great participation in summer reading program this year, which will end this Saturday, August 2. The Friends of Series Library are providing a boy's bicycle and a girl's bicycle as prizes for a drawing for children up through age 12 who completed an entire reading log. For the teens who have completed a bingo card, the drawing prize will be a Nook HD. Adults have a chance to win themed prize baskets in the Series, in Series in the drawings. And then the adult entries will go on to a county drawing, where someone will win a tablet, and someone will win a $100 gift certificate to Amazon, and that's sponsored by the Library Foundation. And the tablets by an anonymous former library person, so that's very generous, I think. Library events in August include leaf rubbing craft, August 7, and thumbprint craft and drawing on August 21. The alternate Thursdays will be our Lego days. In addition, on August 14, San Joaquin Valley College is going to come and do a health fair during that Lego time. We're hoping some parents will take advantage of going over and having their blood pressure and other vital signs taken. And they're also bringing massage chairs, if you have time to come, and you can have a massage. In addition, United Way will be there to present and hand out information on Covered California and the Affordable Health Care Act. Our storytimes continue on Tuesdays at 10:30 a.m., and I've left some calendars for August activities over there on the table, so you're welcome to take those. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Any question? Oh, thank you, Carol.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Leonard Shepherd, 2841 Fowler Road, Number 71. I got in on the last part of the study session, and there was mention of this building that we're in, and its costs and everything. I hate to say I told you so, but to the City Council, back when they were talking about building this thing, and I call it a thing because it's very large, it's a mammoth, and it costs a lot of money, as you know, just to have a meeting in here. And I told them at the time, the decisions you make today will be haunting you, possibly the citizens anyway, 10, 15, 20 years from now. The same thing I'm saying to you, is some of the decisions you will be making may have a lot farther reach than one year, or two years, or three years. So, I hope that you all put your thinking caps on, and Mr. Wells, you come up with some good plans, because the citizens of Series will be paying for a long, long time for this building. It's not going to ever be a moneymaker. There is just no way, because the cost of keeping it going is going to go up. And, but, it is what it is. We're stuck with it, and we have to try to figure out how to keep it going. On a much nicer note, I thought that was really good to see those gentlemen honored, but I don't think they would say they were doing anything special. If you got down one-on-one and asked them, "Did you do anything special that day?", and they said, "No, I did my job." But, that's what they do every day, your police and fire, no matter whether they're doing something heroic or just doing their everyday thing, they're doing their job, and they'll tell you that. And I think that that's, we have the finest police and fire in the county, bar none. A lot less hassle than the people in Modesto, a lot less than in Turlock. So, we're pretty lucky in the way our police and fire, and I certainly hope you don't have to lay off a whole bunch of cops and firefighters, because that just puts the city's citizens in deeper trouble than we already have. Because, and then you think about overtime, oh, boy. Overtime's going to go way out of sight, because you still have to keep those engines main-staffed, and those patrol cars staffed in order to protect the citizens. And there are certain obligations that the city has that they have to meet. And I'm really glad I'm not sitting up there where you guys are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave Pratt, 1905 Lupin Lane. I, too, got in the meeting late, and it's going to be kind of hard to act the fall. I just got out of another meeting, Veterans Advisory Commission, and basically, they're looking for, holding their meetings not just in Modesto, but in the other cities. Matter of fact, they're going to do one in September in Patterson, and I thought maybe we might be able to come up and use, over at Legion Hall, maybe one. It's not a monthly thing, because they want to go to all the different cities, but the budget is, but I don't know how that's going to work again. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Please come forth, state your name and address for the record, please.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Renee Ledbetter, Series Chamber President. I just wanted to update you on some upcoming events that are going to be taking place. I wanted to direct you all, I don't know if you have had an opportunity or not, to go on to the Chamber's website, which is serieschamber.com. But, we do have a community calendar on there, which allows you to see upcoming events, and we're adding more things as more nonprofit groups and service clubs give us their items. So, that is a good resource to go to, to look for upcoming events. We do have, in August, several things taking place. We have on August 5, National Night Out, and we will be doing a safety fair and expo here in the community center. It will be open to the public, and we're encouraging people to come out, participate, get some information on crime prevention, and ways of working in conjunction with the Police Department, creating that community partnership that we desperately need. So, we encourage everyone to come out to that. We also have a mixer on August 14. We typically run our mixers on the second Thursday of each month. This month, it will be at Curves, and we are going to be holding her, W. Wilson's, in the audience, and we'll be holding her re-grand opening, because she has moved. Once she purchased the location, she moved the location. So, we're going to be doing a re-grand opening for that. We have also scheduled, August 23, is our first annual Smoke on the River BBQ Challenge and Music Festival, and we're really excited about this. We have had contestants submit their applications from as far as Los Angeles to compete in this. And they'll be vying for the Best of the West team for Series, and so we're encouraging people to participate if they are backyard barbecuers, or if they really take it serious to the point where they're looking at it for a profession. We encourage them to come out. It's $100 to apply, and all of the information is online. On August 29, typically, we hold our morning coffee hour on the third Friday of each month. However, because of this music festival, we've pushed it back a week, so August 29, SBG Distribution, which is a local distribution company and a chamber member out of South Modesto, will be hosting our morning coffee hour, and they distribute all of McCormick Spices, El Guapo, and all the different varieties of spices. And when you attend that event, you get to go home with a goodie bag of different spices, so we encourage you to attend that. On a couple of other things, I wanted to just kind of briefly mention to you that we did recently hold our first cleanup, our Caltrans Adopt the Highway Cleanup. We filled 40 bags of trash, you wouldn't be able to tell it today, because they went through and mowed, and a lot of the pieces get mowed, and it looks a little bit dirtier. So, we are in the process of scheduling another cleanup. I want to thank Councilmember Linda Rhino for participating, and we've had, you know, Dave Pratt, we've had some other individuals, Don Cool, W. Wilson, and some other people who came out to help, and we really appreciate that. We are looking for more volunteers, because this is not a one-time thing. We really need to go out on a regular basis, so we would like to kind of increase that list of volunteers, so that we can rotate through them. We'll try not to use you every time, but we definitely could use the help. And then I wanted to just let you know that we have created, we've kind of monetized the Chamber website now, so you can go online and purchase tickets for events such as our BBQ Festival. You could go online and use either a credit card or a PayPal account and purchase tickets for that, pay your membership online. We have an event that we're helping to promote for Diamond Bar Arena, which is a fundraiser for the school district, and so you can purchase a table online through our Chamber website as well. So, we've got a lot of activity going on. I've been away for a couple of weeks, and I think it's been kind of quiet, but I've had a long enough rest, and I'm ready to get back into the groove of things. So, I hope to see you all pretty soon at National Night Out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Renee. Anyone else? Okay, we will move to approval of the agenda as posted or amended, and certification of posting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next, the appointments to boards and commissions. We have one this evening. Council designation of a voting delegate to represent the City of Series at the annual League of California Cities Conference, September 3 through the 5, 2014. And then one on the council that would like to be that voting delegate?
I'll nominate Ken Lane.
We have a nomination of Ken Lane?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. So, Ken is the voting delegate. Do we have to do an alternate, too? No? Okay, perfect. All right, we will move on to conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the 12, excuse me, 12 consent calendar items, or one public hearing item? Okay, hearing none, we will move to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature, and will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is required, that particular item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered separately. Can I have the clerk, please, read the consent calendar?
Item 1, General Correspondence Information Only. Item 1A, Information Technology Division Quarterly Report, Second Quarter, 2014. 1B, Whitmore Mansion Update. 1C, Redevelopment, Economic Development Division Monthly Report, 615 through 715, 2014. 1D, Water Conservation Update. 1E, Informational Memo Regarding Further Study Session Regarding District Elections. Item 2, Register of Audited Demands for Period Covering July 9 through the 21, 2014. Item 3, Council Acceptance of the 2014 Local Agency Biennial Notice for the City of Series as Required by the Political Reform Act. Item 4, Council Acceptance of the 2014 Local Agency Biennial Notice for the Successor Agency of the Former Series Redevelopment Agency and the Successor Agency of the Former Stanislaus Series Redevelopment Commission. Item 5, Council Acceptance of the 2014 Local Agency Biennial Notice for the Oversight Board to the Successor Agency of the Former Series Redevelopment Agency and the Oversight Board to the Successor Agency of the Former Stanislaus Series Redevelopment Commission. Item 6, Resolution Number 201491, approving the transfer of real property from the City of Series to the Successor of Series to the Successor Agency of the Former Series Redevelopment Agency. Item seven, Resolution Number 2014-92, re-establishing the classification for the position of Director of Engineering Services, City Engineer, and eliminating the Deputy City Manager, City Engineer, classification. Item eight, Resolution Number 2014-93, awarding the construction contract for the City of Series Well Project Wells 41 and 42 to ZIM Industries, authorizing a 10% contingency and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract. Item nine, Resolution Number 2014-94, approving the purchase of a Storage Area Network, SAN System, from CDW Government. Item 10, Set Public Hearing Date of August 11th, 2014, to Consider An Appeal From Robert Gross of Eurostar Inc., DBA, WSS, Regarding The Planning Commission's Denial Of A Variance Request Pertaining To Wall Signs That Exceed The Maximum Allowable Square Footage Requirement For A WSS Retail Footwear And Apparel Store At 1342 East Hatch Road. Item 11, Resolution Number 2014-95, Accepting The Fire Station Number Two Concrete Repair, Authorizing The Filing Of The Notice Of Completion And Retention Release To The Contractor. Item 12, Resolution Number 2014-96, Establishing A City Policy Regarding The Installation Of Stop Signs Which Do Not Meet Warrants.
Thank you, Cindy. Is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item poll for further discussion? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like an item poll for further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Moved to approve one, A, B, C, D, E, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Unfinished business, we have none. Public hearing, we have one item. Public hearing to consider ordinance number 2014-1020, consideration of proposed zoning ordinance text amendment 13-05ZOTA, to amend sections 18.42.200K and 18.42.140D of the Series Municipal Code, to modify the sign code to remove allowances for specific types of permitted signs currently permitted for motor, excuse me, auto slash motor vehicle sale lots that are prohibited at other commercial businesses. Mr. Westbrook?
Thank you, Mayor Council Members. At the meeting, the study session of February 24th, the city council and the planning commission held a joint meeting and kind of went through the types of temporary signs that were seen within the city. Many of those were not permitted by our code. And the purpose of that meeting was determine which signs may be appropriate for our community and which may not. There had been a proliferation of those types of signs over the number of years. And so we kind of wanted to get a fresh start and move forward. The direction that was provided by the planning commission, city council at that meeting was to begin to enforce the existing kind sign code as of April 1st, which happened. We still, from time to time, see things pop up, but Frank Alvarez and our code enforcement office is very responsive to get those addressed. Continue to prohibit such sign as A-frames, the mannequins slash sign spinners, prohibit feather banners, the yard signs and inflatables, except which would be permitted under some temporary stuff for like a grand opening, et cetera. And then one of the things that was the, the last kind of direction provided and why we're here tonight is to take out certain allowances at those automotive vehicle sales lots that aren't really permitted at any of the other commercial business. And primarily, that was, boils down to three things. One being the feather banners that currently are permitted at car lots that are no longer permitted at other commercial users. And then to kind of bring in line the banners and inflatables that the car lots had provisions for, so that we bring those in line with all the other commercial businesses. At the June 16th Planning Commission meeting, these items were presented to the planning commission. They discussed that. And by a four-o vote with Commissioner Katchel being absent, recommended all the changes that staff had made. Really, those changes boiled down to putting a prohibition in our code that says that you can't have the feather banners or flags. And then changing the banners for the car lots and the inflatables for the car lots to be consistent with those other commercial businesses. We did have, because this is a little bit unique and really, it kind of only affects a small segment of the business in Series, in addition to the public notice that was put into the paper, staff on the planning commission and the city council occasion sent a little informational memo with it, kind of telling those business owners kind of what changes were being made. We did have one individual attend the planning commission meeting. They didn't necessarily have any objections to the changes that were made. Very limited contact. I know that there is a car lot owner in the audience this evening that I spoke to with, spoke with before the meeting. But the changes are really kind of minor. So of the fourteen subsections that regulate the automotive vehicle sales, there's only two little components that were changing. So the other allowances that the car lots have, they continue, still have the benefit to advertise that way. Some of them choose to, some of them choose not to. So it's just really a kind of minor change, but this is kind of the last bit of cleanup so that we can get those kind of temporary sign issues addressed. So I would be available to answer any questions that you may have.
Is there any questions of staff? Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to the audience or anyone who might want to address this item. Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for direction. Just one question for you, Tom. You know, the signs, not the feather ones, but if someone has a pole and there's a bar at the top and a bar at the bottom, there's a tall skinny sign, you kind of see them on street signs. Would, would, would car dealerships be able to allow to do something like that?
The, the car lots have a provision generally, if they have a light standard or something like that, they have kind of what they're called a pole banner. And it's kind of referenced just what you have and it's kind of centered within the pole. They already have the ability to do that. And that's continuing.
So it's just the feather sign?
It's just the feather ones that kind of go on the street. They're about 10 feet tall. They flap in the wind. Those will go away.
Okay. Okay. All right, I'll bring it back to the council for direction. Or discussion. But this is an ordinance, so.
This is an ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay. I move to have the ordinance be read by title and number only.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Can I please have the clerk read the ordinance?
Ordinance Number 2014-1020, ordinance amending title 18 of the Series zoning ordinance to amend sections 18.42.200K and 18.42.140D of the Series Municipal Code, to modify the sign code to remove allowances for specific types of signs currently permitted for automotive vehicle sales lots that are prohibited at other commercial businesses.
I move to approve ordinance number 2014-1020 for introduction and first reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. So we'll have the second reading in our next meeting. Okay, new business, we have none. At this time, we'll adjourn as the city council to a meeting of the successor agency of the former Series Redevelopment Agency. The successor agency of the former Series Redevelopment Agency, meeting of Monday, July 28th, 2014. Let the roll call reflect that all members are present. First item is the approval of the minutes of the meeting on February 24th, 2014. All members were present?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. This time, public comment period. Matters under the jurisdiction of the board and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the board. Any member of the public wishing to address the board during the public comment period shall be permitted to be heard once for up to five minutes. Is there anyone on the audience that would like to address the former Series Redevelopment Agency? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the approval of agenda as posted or amended and certification of posting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Consent calendar, one item, Resolution Number 2014-02, SA-CRA, accepting grant deeds to certain real properties from the City of Series. Is there any questions on that item or further discussion?
Is the state gonna make the city liquidate these properties once it transfers back over?
Yeah, in accordance with the long-range management plan, yes, although we are arguing over a few properties that we think we should be able to keep. But that is still an ongoing conversation. But most likely, most of the properties will have to be sold and the revenue from that sale will go back to the state.
So if they sell off our parking lot for this building and we don't have enough parking for it any longer, then what happens?
That's a really good question. That's our primary argument that we have with them on that particular item.
I would add, if I may, that with regard to those three properties that are currently used for public uses, that it's my understanding from speaking with our consultants, that we have a very strong case of being able to retain those properties for public use. So we're also attempting to obtain ownership of the three other properties for future development. And that might be a bit more of a difficult task. And we're not terribly confident of that, but we're going to try. The decision rests with the Department of Finance. Once the, as indicated in my memorandum, once the, the long-range property management plan is approved by this, this successor agency, and then again by the oversight board, that long-range management plan then goes to the Department of Finance for its final approval. And that will be at the, that will be the time when the ultimate decision is made regarding the properties.
Okay. Councilmember Klein?
So would that give them a possibility of, we just deeded the properties back over to the successor agency? The state turns around and says, yes, City of Series, you can obtain those. Could they require the City of Series to buy them from the successor agency, those three properties from public thing, and then we have to give the money over? So we'd be basically buying the property twice?
No, no.
Okay.
The, the disposition would just simply direct the transfer of title back to the city.
Okay. So I'll look for direction on this item. It's a consent calendar item.
We just need a, if there's no further discussion, a, a resolution approving consent calendar item one, a resolution, 2014-02.
Public? Yeah, I can open it up to the public if anyone would like to speak on that.
Yeah, Dave Pratt, Series. I just have a, they gave you the money to, to do will and you bought the property. And then Brown says, all the money you haven't used were taken back. But they also said they're taking back the property too, that you've already used the money that you'd already spent?
What had happened is when the redevelopment agencies were in existence, the property, certain properties were purchased with the monies to, to develop. In our case, one of them is the parking lot that you see to the south here, and we developed it. When all of this was occurring with the, the potential disbanding of the redevelopment agency, the city council transferred this asset from the redevelopment agency to the City of Series. As a result of that, part of the action was that the redevelopment agencies had to liquidate the things that they had. The state is now forcing us to transfer the asset back to the successor, or the redevelopment agency or the successor agency so that it can be disposed of and sold, so that they can take that. So in a long, roundabout way, yes, that's what is occurring. So the properties that you see here could no longer, could potentially no longer be a part of the city and could, someone else could, could be involved now. Obviously, we have a strong case to be able to get that back, but we could find ourselves with a situation where this building doesn't have enough parking now because someone else owns the parking lot.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any other comments on this? Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the council for some direction.
Move to adopt Resolution 2014-02, S.A.C.R.A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Okay, at this point, we will reconvene as a city council member. Are there any council member referrals? Is there any council member that would like to have an agenda item placed on a future agenda? Okay, seeing none. Reports? I have nothing to report this evening. Councilmember Rhino?
Yes, I have a couple of things. As Renee Ledbetter said, we were part of the Adopt a Highway last month, and it was actually a lot of fun. I mean, it may sound crazy, but it really felt good to get out there. We started at 6:30 and got her done. And two weeks later, it looked almost as bad as when we had started. But, and I don't understand how everyone can throw all that trash out, but it happens. But I know that she's also taking applications all the time. And so what I've done, I've taken, you know, I've, I've gone ahead and printed these out for you. So if you would all like to take one and pass it down. And I'm sure it'll just take a couple of seconds to fill out, and Renee would be happy to take it. I mean, it honestly was a lot of fun. You get to wear your little goggles and your, I'm sorry?
Rhino, they shouldn't be laughing out there. I see quite a few bodies out there. We could probably make more copies, right?
Yes. But I think a lot of them have already filled out the applications, so they're good there. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But it was, it honestly felt really good. So instead of me always complaining about how trashy it looks driving down the freeway, it was like, huh, I did something. So, and we didn't find any bodies, which was another good thing. And the other thing is, National Night Out, Tuesday, August 5th. I wanted to invite all of you to come out as well because my husband will be barbecuing hot dogs and I'll be serving him up. So stop on by. I have, I have flyers for that, too.
Okay. Vice Mayor Drossit?
Nothing.
Councilmember Lane?
Nothing.
Councilmember Klein?
Nothing.
Okay, we will move on. Ms. Cumberland? Mr. Lyons?
No.
Mr. Wells?
Just one quick thing. Whitmore Avenue updated the PG&E work. The paving work is mostly complete. Last piece of work is just raising the manholes and the iron to grade. And they expect to be done with that work this week and have the loops all back functioning properly. And that should be the last of PG&E on this section of Whitmore before they start later this year on Whitmore west of Highway 99.
Okay. Mr. Westbrook?
Nothing.
Mr. Dean? No. Mr. Nichols? Mr. Smith? Mr. Collins? Mr. Hallam? Okay. Jeremy? Anything? I see we have Mr. Fernandez here. Anything from TID you'd like to share with us? Okay, none. All right. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn. We have closed session this evening, Mike?
Yes, we do.
Okay, we will adjourn to closed session, conference with labor negotiator. And after that, we will adjourn to our regular scheduled meeting, which will be held Monday, August 11th. Mr. Pratt?
I just have a question on, 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 on,